Let me call this meeting to order. This is the September regular scheduled board meeting. It is now 6:30, September 20, 2016. Determination, we have a quorum. Mr. Dicky Gonzalez.
Present.
Dr. Norberto Cantú.
Present.
Mr. Eduardo Ramírez.
Present.
Ms. Judy Solís. And myself, Daniel García, is present as well. We do have a quorum. The Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The approval of minutes for the regular board meeting, August 9, 2016. Special board meeting, August 17, 2016. Public meeting, August 23, 2016. Special board meeting, August 23, 2016. Do we have a motion for the approval of minutes?
I move.
We have a motion by Ms. Solís. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramírez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Public forum, we have three individuals. The first one being Ms. Adalina Varrial. Information of the TIPS grant RFA for Gruia Middle School and Alto Bonito Elementary.
Good afternoon.
Everybody has, what, five minutes? Five minutes.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mr. Board President, and board members, and respective audience. This is just for information purposes. Rio Grande City CISD is currently underway requesting for application for a grant known as TIPS, Texas Title I Priority Services Grant. It is qualifiable for Gruia Middle School and for Alto Bonito. The objective is to raise the students' academic needs and to meet measurable objectives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have Ms. Cristo García, Red Ribbon Rally, October 12, 2016.
Good evening, Mr. President, School Board, and Superintendent Mr. García, and members of the community. I am Karina García. I'm the Substance and Alcohol Abuse Counselor, and I would like to formally announce, along with Mr. Ricardo Solís, the Director of Counseling, the event that we'll be having, the Red Ribbon Rally that will take place on October the 12th, 2016, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. at the stadium. It is with great honor that I announce that we will be having Mrs. Mika Camarena, the wife of the late Enrique Camarena, coming to join us in this event. It is a great honor to have her during this event. The good thi- the thing is that she will only be here for one day, so the event that will transpire is we'll be having her go to the different schools to meet and greet the students, the staff, and as well as administration. After that, the event that will transpire will be the main event, which is the Red Ribbon Rally. We are looking very forward to having her, and I just wanted to formally announce. We will also have in attendance different sectors from the community, as well as students, staff, and administration from RGCC ISD. With great pleasure, I formally invite everyone and each and one of you to participate in this event. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we have all of Rio Grande City PD here, so it'd be nice to extend a formal invitation to them to join us. I'm sure this is a call near and dear to them, so.
Yes, we'll be extending all the invitation to them as well.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Joel Varrial. Mr. Varrial has an item. Close session, H.
Mr. Daniel García, members of the school board, Mr. García Superintendent, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address you here today. First and foremost, I am here as a taxpayer, as a concerned citizen, and as the mayor of the great city of Rio Grande City. I am here today to petition the school board to drop the frivolous lawsuit against the city of Rio Grande City pertaining to the law enforcement substation because this lawsuit is simply and absolutely without merit, standing or any legal grounds. As per U.S. government and the school district records, it is evident that RGCC ISD sold the property to the U.S. government in 1956 for $640. Subsequently, the U.S. government turned the property over to Rio Grande City, and therefore it behoves the school board to do what is right and just and drop this frivolous lawsuit. After all, it is not the school district's property. The disappointing and downright regrettable truth is that the attorneys are the only ones benefiting from this lawsuit because the school district has absolutely no standing in this case. The school's attorney is bound to make tens of thousands of dollars in legal fees, not to mention the defense legal fees incurred by the city. And unfortunately, it is all a waste of taxpayer monies. It is my sincere hope that for the benefit of all taxpayers, that the school board will drop the senseless, unnecessary, and expensive burden. Once again, for the sake of our taxpayers, I challenge the school board to do what is right and just because it's the right thing to do. Furthermore, it is imperative that both the city and the school district resolve this matter expeditiously. Let us remember the taxpayers are the ones who bear the burden when two taxing entities are involved in any form of legal wrangling. Again, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address you here today, and on behalf of the great city of Rio Grande City, we wish RGCC ISD a wonderful and successful school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Isn't public forum great? I don't think the city has the same.
I, no. Item one, consider and take possible action on travel request for one Assistant Superintendent, one State Bilingual Director, and one Elementary Principal to travel to Bravo, Utah to attend the partnership forum Imagine Learning on October 25th through the 28th, 2016.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Mr. García. One Assistant Superintendent, a Bilingual Director, and a Principal is asking permission to travel to Utah to attend a partnership forum for Imagine Learning, a new program that we're implementing this school year here in our district, sir.
Do I have any questions?
Any discussion, item one? We have a motion, item one?
We approve item one. Present.
We have a motion by Mr. González, a second by Mr. Klein, and for the record, Mr. Klein is now present as well. Do we, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item two, cons- thank you, Mr. Payne. Item two, consider and take possible action on memorandum of agreement between RGCC ISD TMC, TMS Head Start, Early Head Start Program, and literacy transition activities for the 2016-2017 school year.
The, good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and Mr. García, and ladies and gentlemen. The purpose of the, of the agreement is to enter into memorandum of, to the Institute of Working Procedures between the appropriate local educational agency and the TMC Head Start, Early Head Start Program, on literacy and transition activities for the provisions of providing services to the children between the, between birth to five years old and their families. The administration recommends approval. It's a renewal.
On item two, do we have a motion, item two?
I move to approve items presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solís on item two. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Klein. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item three, consider and take possible action on request from Region One ESC to continue the use of Building Number One for the Adult Education and Literacy Program for the 2016-2017 school year.
The Rio Grande City CISD is requesting permission to enter into a memorandum of agreement with Region One Education Service Center for the adult program. The purpose of establishing an adult education literacy program for the eligible participant from July 16 to June 2017. The district will receive an amount of $22,480 for the use of the facility for the year. That's considered Building One. This is again a renewal with, with Region One. We're requesting you approve the recommendation.
Any discussion, item three? We have a motion, item three? We have a motion by Mr. Klein. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramírez. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item four, consider and take possible action on donations to RGCC ISD.
The following donations have been received by Rio Grande City CISD, as listed. I think you all have an attachment on there.
We have a motion, item four?
I move to approve the item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solís on item four. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Mr. González. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item five, consider and take possible action on Stark County Juvenile Probation Department for progressive sanction officer.
The district has a, has an agreement for, has had an agreement for several years in the past with the Stark County Juvenile Probation Department. It's the former Tri-County Judicial District Juvenile Probation Department. For a progressive sanction officer, the cost for the service would be $20,714.03. We are recommending the approval to reinstate this program. Do we have any discussion, item five?
I just had some questions for Mr. Recio because we didn't, we didn't get enough answers at the committee meeting.
We, we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, we just, I was planning on tabling this item because we did not get information that we had requested, and if we can set up a meeting for that.
We can. We, the superintendent requested a meeting, and we did meet with him on, on the, a week ago or so.
They didn't go through the committee, though.
We went through the contracted.
Or contracted services. I was going to say.
Because there was also presented in finance as well.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. So I'm a little confused with that.
Okay.
I didn't, we didn't get information.
We can, okay.
Okay.
That's fine.
We have a motion. You want to make a motion, a table?
Sure.
Motion to table, we have a second?
Well, what I'm saying is that I used to work for the county attorney's office, and so I'm very familiar with the juvenile justice program, and I, I just, I'm sorry that information didn't get to you. I know that it came through contracted services, and then Dora Lisa Science had given me a copy of the letter. She'd also said, I thought she had CC'd all of us. But I just know that they help with the, you know, if any of other children, any of the students are on probation, they go in, they help administer drug tests. If somebody has a question on the code or stuff like that, I know that they help our officers. I know that they help at the alternative center, and so.
Well, if they, if they answered the questions and everything sounds good, we should just go ahead.
Mr. President, will we approve item five as presented?
We have a motion by Mr. González. We have a second by Mr. Klein?
Yes.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item six, consider and take possible action on TASB Risk Management Participation Agreement.
Rio Grande City CISD participates in the TASB Risk Management Unemployment Compensation Program for reporting unemployment compensation. In essence, we are self-funded as opposed to paying a flat rate as other employers do. Our contribution is based on unemployment claims based, paid on our account. This agreement automatically renewed each year, however, we're requesting board approval. To our knowledge, this is the only organization that performs this service for, for school districts. We, as an administration, recommend approval to review the agreement contract.
We have a, do we have a motion, item six?
I so move, Mr. President.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramírez. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Mr. González. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item seven, consider and take possible action on TASB Energy Direct Energy Contract Extension.
Rio Grande City CISD is asking for approval on a term contract with Direct Energy. We had this go through committee on the contract through the TASB Cooperative, which worked with the school districts across the valley, across the state, really. The approximate savings, I think you, I believe you have an attachment there, a copy, and we want to recommend a, a 24-month extension. It's a good flat rate, and we have a representative here tonight with us from Brownsville that worked with TASB, Mr. Cesar López. And in case there's any questions, Direct Energy is the old CPNL people that provide light, energy to our community, and we work pretty much well with, with these, with this organization, so we are recommending approval.
Do you have a motion, item seven?
Mr. Recio, if I may, I think we, I think we need to emphasize that by entering into this 12-month contract, we're saving 24? Is it 12 or 24?
By, by entering, it's 24. By entering this contract, we would be saving $212,000 on, on energy that we would be, we, you know, the price is flat, it's way down, the chances of it going lower are slim. I believe that this is the time to take advantage of the extension offer, and it brings a little room for us at the district to take advantage of.
So over the course of two years, we'd see a savings of 200,000?
That's correct.
Awesome.
We have the rep here. If you have any other questions that you may want to ask. We've done this before. In fact, I did it about a year and a half ago or so, and we did get a better rate than the existing rate that we had before. So, so far, so good. We, we got a good track record. It's good savings. Those are deep discounts, and this is what it's all about, trying to take advantage of savings like this for the kids.
I just want to make sure we put those numbers out there.
Yeah, this is great. I mean, it, actually, the, the actual code I had was a .43, and it dipped down to .41 for today, so that's a sign, I believe, that we need to act on it.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a motion, item seven?
I so move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramírez. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solís. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item eight, consider and take possible action on order of appointment of presiding judges and alternate judges for the November 8, 2016, school board election.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the school board. Obviously, my name is Hilda González Garza. I have been assigned to be your early voting clerk. At this point in time, I did tender to you all an attachment. There is an order of an appointment with regards to your election judges or presiding judges and alternate presiding judges for the November 8, 2016. Within this list, it encompasses not only the early voting presiding judges, but also the voting or on Election Day, presiding judges and potentially alternate judges. So this form is not something that I invented. It's a form that you've similarly seen before on the last election, so it's basically a little bit of copy and paste. The only thing that has changed is the fact that we have different presiding judges. And the other thing is that because this is a presidential election, we have to have more sites on Election Day, and as a result of that, we have to have more people that are going to be working those sites. So I move, I ask that you all approve the order of appointment that's been tendered to you.
Any discussion, item eight? Do we have a motion, item eight?
I so move.
We have a motion by Ms. Solís. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramírez. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item nine, consider and take possible action on the joint election agreement between Rio Grande City Consolidated Independent School District and the County of Starr, Texas, for the November 8, 2016, school board election.
Okay. Again, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I also have for you a joint election agreement. We have never done a joint election agreement. Let me emphasize that before. So at this point in time, just to be all-inclusive and to make sure that we have our sites that are listed, we've already made an expense on the machines that we're going to be utilizing for both early voting and on Election Day, and obviously, we're going to need more machines because of the Election Day sites that we're required to share with the county, which out of the 10 precincts, we have to use seven. So on that day, we're going to be using the most of the machines, and so there's been a change. I also gave you a copy of, that was provided by the election administrator when I first entered or tried to do this agreement, was where they had four sites for early voting and then seven sites for, or the 10 sites for Election Day. They have since changed them on two other occasions. So for that reason, we have a joint election agreement where we're asking that we use some common sites, and we also want to utilize the common voting site that they're going to have on Election Day. We want to use them on early voting, which would be El Cenizo and La Victoria. The only site that would be different, that is not on the list with the county, obviously, is the one that we've always had on our own, which is here in Fort Ringo, which would be at the cafeteria. Right now, we cannot use, utilize that triangle that has already been used before, simply because there is a chance to be, that's been leased to Region One, and chance to be is housed there. So to avoid any problems or congestion of traffic, we're asking that it be at the old cafeteria, and so I'm asking at this point in time that you all agree to this joint election agreement, and then hopefully, I can present this to Commissioner's Court on Monday of next week for their approval as well.
Discussion, item nine?
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Why are we only using machines? Why can we use a paper ballot also?
Excuse me?
Why can we use a, you're only using machine, why can you not use a paper ballot also?
At this point in time, we're not using the paper ballots because the ones, when we approved the initial contracts, we indicated that the paper ballots would only be for the mail-in. We're doing all electronic. That way, there's documentation on the electronic, and that way, my presiding judges, there's no allegations that anybody lost a ballot or misplaced a ballot, a paper ballot. So for record-keeping purposes, it's, everything is the same, as if it was on the machine. We also will be doing some trainings to give you that information.
Yeah, but if we never approved that, then we're not going to use paper ballots.
Yes, sir, you did when we approved the machines that we were going to utilize.
It didn't say there were no paper ballots. It says 15 machines, but it didn't say no paper ballots. You look at the agenda, Becky, you have the agenda here? He had, he only said 15 machines. He never said any paper ballots.
Yes, Your Honor, sir. Like I indicated to you, Mr. Klein, I've already gotten approval from the Secretary of State. I was required to get a certificate before that board meeting so that I could get those machines approved. They were approved by the Secretary of State. That certificate is on file. If you need a copy, sir, I will be more than glad to give it to you, but those are the machines that they have been approved by the Secretary of State. All the other counties during their elections have electronic machines, and we are doing the same thing. We're trying to move a little bit forward and get those results quicker.
It's going to be paperless soon. I just know because I work the county elections for the Democratic Party, it's supposed to be paperless. That's why the county ended up buying more of those electron, I'm just, it's going to be paperless.
That's correct.
The county also?
The county still uses paper, but I'm saying they're buying more of those, and I can't remember the name of the machines, because I call them the ADA's. But anyway, eventually, the state is going to regulate, eventually, and I'm not saying it's today, but they are going to go completely paperless, for whatever reason. I was just interjecting.
But how about if somebody comes and asks you, I want a paper, vote on a paper ballot? Are we going to deny it?
I cannot, sir. I cannot give you a paper ballot because we're not getting any paper ballots on early voting or on Election Day. It would all be electronics, sir.
Who, but who made the rules? You did, or who did those rules?
Those rules were implemented by this board, and those rules were also approved by the Secretary of State, the machines, sir.
I remember so on the agenda, Ms. Garza.
Very well, Mr. Klein. They were on, the contract was in the agenda.
We have a motion, item nine?
I move to approve the item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solís. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramírez. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 10, consider and take possible action on reasonable regulation of elector, electioneering outside the 100-foot marker pursuant to the Texas Election Code Section 61.003, subsection A-1, for the November 8, 2016, school board election.
Yes, with regards to this, we have an addendum with regards to the regulation. I have drafted a memo. This is similar to a memo that was provided on the last election that was had in 2014. It's been revamped a little bit because of, obviously, the only site that will be within the school district will be the Fort Ringo Old Central Cafeteria site. As you all know, in, in front of that site, there is a parade field, so we will be utilizing that parade field for the electioneering. That way, there's nobody on the roads that will block traffic or that would hurt anybody. So in reality, if you look at the first regulation, we're saying that we're implementing these regulations for the general welfare and safety of our students, faculty, and staff, and these regulations are also being implemented so as not to interfere with the day-to-day function of our school district. As you all are aware, normally, our elections get very heated, very contested, and so that we have a little bit of better control, and the faculty and staff are not really interrupted by these elections that have to take place on a two-year basis, every two years. We're asking that this policy is being implemented.
Discussion, item 10? Do we have a motion, item 10?
I so move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramírez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solís. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 11, consider and take possible action.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 11, consider and take possible action on tax refund for the month of August 2016.
Presented is a request for approval of tax refunds for the month of August. The refund totaling $1,387.97 being requested. Attached is a summary of the, of the refunds. The administration recommends approval of the amount.
We have a motion, item 11?
I so move to approve this item.
We have a motion by Dr. Cantú. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. González. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 12, consider and take possible action on requisitions 5,000 and over in a 12-month aggregate.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. García Superintendent. Ladies and gentlemen, we do have requisitions over $5,000 in a 12-month aggregate for your consideration, starting on page 97. There is proper funding for all these requisitions. I don't know if you have any questions on any of these?
Do we have a, any discussion, item 12? Do we have a motion, item 12?
I so move to approve this item.
We have a motion by Dr. Cantú. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramírez. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 13, consider and take possible action on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. TASB DNA Exhibits Performing Appraisal Evaluation of Teachers. Exhibit A, Consent for Multiple Appraisal Observations Totalling 45 Minutes. And Exhibit B, Resolution of the Board to Approve a List of Appraisers.
Mr. Board President, members of the board, Superintendent Schools, Mr. García. Before you, we humbly recommend approval for two exhibits added to our DNA Local. DNA Local is a performance appraisal instrument, which is the T-test that we, what the law requires us to use this year. And Exhibit A, as you mentioned, is, 45-minute appraisal is required, and this allows with consent between the appraiser and the teacher to break it up into segments. As you see on Exhibit A, and Exhibit B is a resolution. If approved, you will see come later down, item 15, which will approve our appraisers for the school year. Administration recommends approval. This was presented to Personnel and Policy Committees, respectfully.
We have a motion, item 13?
I so move.
We have a motion by Mr. Klein. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solís. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 14, consider and take possible action on teacher, teachers' appraisal calendar for the 2016-2017 school year.
On item 14, sir, you see the calendar, which will allow us, will ensure that we follow the teacher appraisal instrument properly and that implementation is, is how it's supposed to be. This was also presented to Personnel and Policy Committee, and administration recommends approval.
We have a motion, item 14?
I so move.
We have a motion by Mr. Klein. We have a motion by Mr. Klein, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item fifteen, consider and take possible action on resolution to approve administrators' appraisers' list for the 2016-2017 school year.
On item fifteen, as you saw, on item thirteen, Exhibit B was passed, and this is a resolution approving the appraisers for the 16-17 school year. As you see in your pass out, you see the resolution and the recommended list for approval. Administration recommends approval.
Do we have a motion, item fifteen?
I move to approve the item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Gonzalez, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item sixteen, consider and take possible action on Walsh?
Walsh.
It says Walsh.
It's Walsh. It's Walsh.
It's Walsh.
Walsh, Gallegos Retainer Program Renewal Fee for the 2016-2017 school year.
Thank you. The retainer that you see attached is for Walsh, Gallegos, you see the membership benefits on page one sixteen, or beginning on page one sixteen, and all the agreement specifications, beginning on page one eighteen. This agreement's for the 16-17 school year, and this was presented to Personnel Committee on eight twenty-nine.
Very reasonable cost.
It is.
For legal services.
It is.
And I know you said you use it often, it's a quick phone call.
I believe, if I don't mistake, I believe our special ed department.
Also.
Our special ed department is.
Excellent.
So Administration recommends approval.
I would move we approve this item as presented, Mr. President.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item seventeen, consider and take possible action on Region One Education Service Center Personal Service Cooperative Commitment for the 2016-2017 school year.
Yes, sir, on item seventeen, this is a service co-op with Region One, that our department's used for several years. There's several benefits to it, recruitment, retention of teachers, obviously, anything that's coming down from the state that they want to give us a heads-up. This money is budgeted through our department, and Administration recommends approval.
We have a motion, item seventeen?
I move to approve the item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Klein, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Klein. Item eighteen, consider and take possible action on MIMO Pad Interactive Tablet.
Good evening, once again, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Garcia, ladies and gentlemen. The Office of Curriculum Instruction comes before you to go ahead and ask for the EduSmart program. The MIMO, interactive tablet, sorry, I was already jumping into the next item. Item number eighteen, and we are asking to see, you know, we purchased this program, so we want to enhance it this coming school year, and it's a wireless pen that is used to break free and take control interactive whiteboard from anywhere in the classroom. When you look at the title, it's misconstrued there a little bit, it's not really a tablet, but it's a bar that makes any whiteboard in the classroom interactive. So the teacher can walk away and have their own iPad, and work with math problems, and have it project on the board. It, the, that is the MIMO bar. The application, the app, allows students to have the app in their device, in their computers, Chromebooks, laptops, whatever the iPads that they might have, and they also get to project on the boards in the math classrooms. And if you look at the quote, we are looking at purchasing twenty-eight more of these MIMO Teach wireless, and fifty applications. Every elementary will have two applications, and every middle school, high school will have up to four, depending on the size of the campus. And with me this evening, I have Christina Chapa, she's one of the teachers who has used it for a year, in her second year of implementation, and she'll like to say a few words.
Good evening, school board members, my name is Christina Chapa, I am a middle school math teacher at AC2E Middle School. I just would like to share with you how I use the MIMO interactive whiteboard. I was part of the pilot group, I was very fortunate to be part of it. I really like it, because it makes my regular whiteboard into an interactive board. I have a stylus that the students can come up to the board, they can interact with animations, with Java, such as like Geometry Sketchpad, and they can really come up and show what they're thinking is in front of the board, and the best part is, I don't need the whiteboards and erasing and all that. It's really awesome, because when I have my iPad, I'm not tethered to the board, I don't have to be standing in front of the board, I can walk around the classroom. It helps my classroom management, because no one in my class feels like they're too far away from me. Another awesome thing about that is that I can access my computer from standing at the door. Let's say I have a slide, I need to move on to the next slide, I don't have to be at my computer, I can move around. And, and it's really cool that if you have a student who wants to, is kind of shy, doesn't want to come up to the board, what you can do is, you can say, well, here, let me give you the iPad, let me, let you control, and slowly, they can build up their confidence, where at one point, they will be in front of the board. So it's good for those students who are willing to get up to the front, good for those students who want to stay at their seats. And of course, it's awesome, because you'll have kids who are like, I want to finish, I want to get to the board, I want to show my thinking, and suddenly, you'll see all these students really wanting to interact with something so simple that you would think, ah, it's just technology, but they're really, they want to finish, and they want to show other students how they're interacting with this. I want to thank you all for approving this last year, I know that it's been really awesome to implement it, especially going into my second year and seeing more ways that I can use it, and I'm definitely the envy of other math teachers in our district, because they want one too, and they see how convenient it is, and how it simplifies a lot of our teaching that we were doing in PowerPoints. Now we can do it a lot more effectively and efficiently. So thank you all very much, and thank you for your time.
Awesome, thank you, Ms. Chapa, we're always asking for feedback from the people who actually, once we implement a program, you know, we want to monitor it, hear feedback, is it something that was worthwhile, or are we just throwing money at it, so that was good to hear, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Great job, Christina. The total cost of this program is thirty-three thousand, hundred, twenty-nine, and sixty-seven cents, and we are using Fund 255, we do have funding, and we recommend approval.
I move to approve the item as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, a second by Mr. Gonzalez, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item nineteen, consider and take possible action on EduSmart Science Program.
Yes, sir, this is, EduSmart is a science program, grades three through five, and we brought the consultant to come show it to the teachers. There's an old version that was about five years old, and some teachers have utilized it. It is, it empowers teachers and engage students with dynamic multi-lessons. They get to download them and view them to students as they go through their objectives. It supports a flipped and blended learning models and builds students' critical thinking skills. It integrates detailed animated graphics and concise narration that includes instructional modules, inner activities, simulated labs, glossaries, journal activities. It also has formalist, formatative assessments, and some benchmarks that teachers can utilize. And we have two principals here, present tonight, that, you know, they can speak on behalf of their teachers.
Good evening, everyone. EduSmart will be used as a supplement to the state-adopted Pearson Science basal, it's not going to be the main science curriculum. The teacher, what she does, or he does, is they pull lessons from EduSmart that are aligned to the objectives that he or she is teaching, and it provides the teacher with an extra resource, and it's fun and educational. I asked the science teacher to give me a little bit of feedback on EduSmart, and she says that it's visual for students that are visual learners. It introduces them to scientific vocabulary, students are able to see simulations of experiments, let's say they don't have a science lab or certain items, they can see the simulation. It provides questions for discussion, it provides printable tests, and students really like the graphics. So I think it would be good to purchase it.
Thank you, thank you so much, again, feedback is invaluable.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and basically, just to second what Ms. Marisa Saliver has said, you know, from the secondary level, that's basically what the teachers are saying, they're basically seeking your approval for the purchase of this new program, because it is something that we had in the past, but of course, it was an outdated program already, so we're asking to buy the newer version. And one of the most important things that our teachers are really looking forward to is the interactive labs, and the fact that they're able to, be able to see the simulated labs in the classroom, you know, whenever they're lacking any of the materials that they're supposed to be utilizing. So this would be a great opportunity for our teachers to continue teaching our students, and to help them continue succeeding. So thank you for all your support, and we hope that you approve the item as presented. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you, Ms. Garcia.
Great job, ladies. The total cost for all the schools is twenty-seven thousand, five hundred, and it'll be funded through the different campuses, and also the Office of Curriculum Instruction. We recommend approval.
We have a motion, item nineteen?
I move we approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Gonzalez, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty, consider and take possible action on request to purchase thirty-two Dell Marketing Desktops and thirty-two software licenses.
Yes, sir, as presented at the curriculum meeting, in an effort to implement a high-quality pre-kindergarten grant program, which promotes the investment of a high-quality pre-kindergarten education, Real Grandy CDCISD recommends a purchase of thirty-two desktops and thirty-two licenses to be distributed amongst all the pre-K teachers in the district. This will help enhance the programs that they have in the classroom. The total cost is twenty thousand for the desktops, and two thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight, sixty-four for the software, and we are using the pre-K grant fund for twenty-nine. We recommend approval.
Move we approve item twenty as presented?
We have a motion on item twenty by Mr. Gonzalez, do we have a sec, we have a second, Ms. Solis, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-one, consider and take possible action on revising and editing and reading strategies.
Good evening, Mr. Board President, Mr. Garcia, members of the board, community members. The Curriculum and Instruction Department is requesting some training during our staff development periods, not periods, days, on October the tenth and November the seventh. October the tenth would be a revising and editing session, it's hands-on activities and targeted instruction, it's for forty participants, it is during the Staff Development Day, and it is for elementary teachers, and we are going to open it up to some middle school teachers. Now, the other one is on November the seventh, which is also a professional learning day, we're asking for reading strategies again, and teachers will undergo a thorough study of the genre of fiction, expository text, again, for forty participants, and the cost is a thousand, five hundred dollars for the revising and editing for a one-day training for October the tenth, and the other one is the cost of a thousand, two hundred for November the seventh, and its funding is available through the Elementary Fund 199, and we are recommending approval. The teachers are requesting a little more, a little bit more training on the reading strategies, so we are recommending that approval.
All right, do we have a motion, item twenty-one?
I move we approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Gonzalez, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. Item twenty-two, consider and take possible action on memorandum of understanding between Behavioral Health Solutions of South Texas and RDCCISD for the 2016-2017 school year.
Well, once again, coming before you, school board, to go ahead and request for the approval of the, the MOU, Memorandum of Understanding between the Behavioral Health Solutions of South Texas, to educate the school communities with expectations to reduce substance and abuse amongst youth, adults, free of charge. The intervention specialists from VHS will accept referrals from all school counselors and provide educational skills, training to youth and adults implementing the Strengthening Family Program evidence. We recommend approval for this.
Is this border region, or formerly border region, Mitch Mar?
I believe so, yeah, they're located here on the Fort Ringo campus.
Oh, they're located.
And they go to the campuses, yes.
All right, do we have a motion, item twenty-two?
I move to approve the item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-three, consider and take possible action on request from after-school centers in Education ACE Program to advertise for two Texas ACE Site Coordinators, one for Gruia Middle School and one for Gruia High School, and one family engagement specialist to service both schools for the 2016-2017 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Board President. As per the ACE Grant, I am respectfully asking, requesting that you approve the request for advertisement for these positions for the ACE Grant at Gruia High School and Gruia Middle School, and the family engagement coordinator or specialist will service both campuses.
We have a motion, and item twenty-three?
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Klein, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Gonzalez, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-four, consider and take possible action on request for after-school centers in Education ACE Program to advertise for part-time positions for the after-school program for Gruia Middle School and Gruia High School based on needs assessment for the 2016-2017 school year.
Thank you, we did a needs assessment at the beginning of the school year through surveys placed in the teachers' cubbies with permission from the principals, and we want to offer classes that the students will enjoy, and that they'll be able to learn and stay till seven o'clock at night, because it is a long time. So we're requesting the following positions to be posted, of course, online for the ACE Grant for Gruia Middle School and Gruia High School, the attachments are attached to the back of the decision-making form.
We have a motion, and item twenty-four?
Will we approve item twenty-four as presented?
We have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Klein, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-five, consider and take possible action on Educational Research Institute Service, monitor and implement strategies for the after-school center in Education ACE Program for Gruia Middle School and Gruia High School for the 2016-2017 school year.
Thank you. ERI will monitor, implement ACE strategies that are required to be fulfilled with the requirements of the Twenty-First Century Grant at Gruia Middle School and Gruia High School, basically, they're subcontractees, and so we're requesting that they be approved, they are written in the grant, the consulting fee will be incurred by the ACE Grant as written in the grant.
We have a.
Twenty-five as presented?
We have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Klein, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you. Reports?
Mr. President, board members, and ladies and gentlemen, on reports and information, item number one, reads that I would be reporting on the upcoming TA visit that was scheduled for September the nineteenth, that's passed, that happened yesterday. So we move the school board meeting, TA visited the Real Grandy School District yesterday, they were here from eight in the morning till about eight-thirty in the evening, basically, it was a follow-up in reference to a previous visit on the migrant education program. Prior to leaving, we do not receive a report from them, preliminary report until six months after, so I did request from them that I wanted at least an oral report in reference to some of the findings, or some of the recommendations, or things that we need to address at this particular point. They did address some situations in reference to the, how our community ACE are being utilized at the campus, they do believe that community ACE are being utilized for other purposes aside for migrant work, so I am obliged, at this particular point, maybe, to work on a plan where I will be pulling the community ACE from the campuses, and have them in one set place here at the district level, and from here, we will be sending them to particular campuses, that way, we will never deal with that particular issue in reference that they will not be dealing with migrant students at our particular time. Also, I did request also some information in reference to other details, so that we can continue, so that we can begin working on items that we need to address right now, so that we will not wait for the report six months from now. And I do, as ironic as it might sound, I welcome all TA visits, and it tends to, they come into the district, because there's different eyes that are seeing our different programs from a different view, and gives an insight on what we need to do, or if we need to redirect on better serving our students. So that's basically what I'm reporting right now, and once I get the fin, the preliminary report from the agency, I will present it to the board at that particular time.
Anything else on reports?
Thank you, on item two, it's for information only, I don't know, Mr. Garcia, if we do need action on this item, but DNA, we have DNA legal, which is state law, we have local, which is specific to our community, our school district, and DNA regulation, which is really outlines administrative procedures for us. So before you, on item two and three, we have DNA regulation, which is a T-test, the teacher instrument to guide us administratively, exactly what we're going to do as far as self-assessment, goal-setting, timelines, this is aligned to our calendar. And item three is DNB regulation, which, again, you have legal, local, and this is And item three is DNB regulation, which again, you have legal, local, and this is a reg that outlines what we're going to do as far as administrator appraisal. So this is information for the board.
Yeah, let's make a motion to adopt these recommendations and be in compliance with state regulations.
Okay. Do we have a motion on item two from reports and information?
Do we approve it as presented?
We have a motion, my Mr. Gonzalez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Daniel Garcia, Board President, Mr. Alfredo Garcia, Superintendent of Schools, members of the board, and audience present. This evening, I'm here to present to you the annual evaluation for the bilingual ESL program as required by the Texas Education Agency. This was one of the two non-compliance items that we received on the TA report. Just very quickly, as people have been asking me about the logo that was approved by the board a few months ago. And it was created by one of our students in La Union Elementary. That was the student that won. And it's that logo that you see there with the tree and the book inside. And that was the logo for the dual-language program that we implemented this year. So I just wanted to share that with you at this time. And the other logo that you see where it says the two languages and the two cultures, that was the original logo that the bilingual ESL department had for many, many years.
I think we had asked if they had one. We weren't sure.
Yes, so we were able to find it, so now we have those two logos, and I do want to thank you for that.
Very nice.
Very quickly, bear with me, and hopefully it won't take too long. But under Texas Administrative Code eighty-nine twelve sixty-five, we are required to present this evaluation to you. It covers four items. Under item A is that we have to do that annual evaluation based on the assessments on how the bilingual ESL students are doing. Item B is the annual reports have to show the academic progress in either language of the students, the extent to which they are becoming proficient in the English language, the number of students that have been exited from the program, and the number of teachers and teacher A's that are trained to help the bilingual ESL students. Item C is that we must report to the parents the progress of the students, see how they're doing on an annual basis. And then item D is that the principal of each campus, with the help of the SBDM committees, they have to revise their campus improvement plans based on the results that we get from the state on the bilingual ESL students. We do have two programs based on last year, which were the Transitional Bilingual Late Exit Program. That's for the elementaries. It serves students identified as LEAP in both languages. And the idea is to eventually get them to get to the English language only. It provides academic growth. It provides challenging academic work in the student's first language along with meaningful content, academic content in the student's second language. And the goal is to promote high levels of academic achievement. Under this program, the students cannot exit the program until they have been in there six, no later than seven years, six to seven years. The English as a second language for the middle schools and high schools, we have the content-based program. It also serves only students that are identified as LEAP. We must provide a full-time teacher that is certified in the ESL and then provides supplementary instruction in all content areas. It integrates English as a second language with subject matter instruction and by using the language as a medium to learn mathematics, science, and the other subjects. And we cannot exit the students under this program until they have been there at least two years, but no more than five years. As part of TA report, we were also asked to contact an agency that could help us do an evaluation and present those findings to the boards. So they recommended that we would go with our Region One. So we contacted the director of the bilingual ESL program at Region One. She came in during those three meetings that you see there, May nineteen twenty-seven and June twenty-second. We visited some campus. We looked at some LPAK folders reports. We also brought in the Human Resources Office to address some of the issues with teachers not being fully certified. And those were the findings that they presented to us, which is to revise the district recruitment practices, which we are already doing, provide training for teachers in the bilingual ESL certification, especially the BTLPT for the elementary, the ESL endorsement for the secondary schools. We have already provided training, so right now. Also, to develop a bilingual framework, which is the time and treatment based on the four domains, beginning, intermediate, advanced, and advanced high, and the different core areas in the elementary. So we started last week working on that as well. And the LPAK folder review, which at this time, we have had several meetings, and the LPAK committees at each campus have been trained, and they are revising all those forms. Now, we're setting all those forms to be in compliance with TA. Okay? And the next page, you see all the forms and the different purposes that we have to address through the LPAK. Then, as far as data go, what I did for you is we have these charts by grade level, starting with third grade all the way to high school. And I'm presenting to you the data based on the level-two satisfactory, which is the students. That's the level where the students pass, okay? If they score a level one, they're not meeting the expectations. But level two and up, they do. So, and I did the breakdown for you based on the students taking just the star, the star Spanish or star L, the star A, which is for the special ed students, and many of them are in the bilingual program or ESL program, and then the total. So for the sake of time, I'm going to concentrate on the total, which is the one that applies the most to the program. So starting with third grade reading, most of the students in the elementaries, they're also in the bilingual program. So you're going to see that the percentage is almost the same. So we have fifty-six overall, fifty-five for bilingual. Third grade math, sixty-eight, and sixty-nine for bilingual. Fourth grade reading, sixty-three overall, and bilingual sixty-three. Fourth grade math, seventy-two, and bilingual seventy-three. Fourth grade writing, sixty, and bilingual fifty-nine. Fifth grade reading, we had a seventy for both, all students and bilingual. Fifth grade math, eighty-four and eighty-five for bilingual. And fifth grade science, sixty-seven and sixty-seven. Then we have sixth grade reading. We moved to the middle schools. And middle schools, you're going to see that that is where TA, you know, when they came in, the most concerns they had were in the middle schools. So we have sixth grade reading, fifty-four, and then the ESL students, forty-nine. Remember that from middle school, high school, now it goes to ESL, English as a second language. And we do have some students that start getting out of the program. We exit them, so that's why the percentages are different. So we have sixth grade math, sixty-seven, and sixty-four for ESL. Seventh grade reading, we have fifty-four, but the ESL is thirty-eight percent. Then we have seventh grade math, fifty-five, and ESL thirty-nine. And seventh grade writing, sixty, all the students, and ESL forty-four percent. Then we go to eighth grade. Eighth grade, we have all students in reading, seventy-two percent. ESL fifty percent. Mathematics, sixty-seven, and for ESL, fifty-three percent. Eighth grade science, we had all students, fifty-seven, and for ESL, thirty-six. And social studies, forty-seven for all the students, and twenty-five for the ESL. So as you can see, science and social studies and reading are the areas that we really need to concentrate and work with those kids.
Which makes sense because math is a universal language.
Yes.
So it makes sense that reading is where we're
Yes. And then moving on to high school, we have the Algebra I. We had a seventy-two with all the students, fifty-four with the ESL. Biology, eighty, and ESL sixty-one percent. English, one, forty-six, and ESL seventeen percent. And then English two, we had a fifty-two overall and twenty-four with the ESL. And US History, eighty-seven, and ESL seventy-two. And then we, just last week, if I'm not mistaken, we got the PB Mass Report release, Performance-Based Monitoring Analysis System. And this is the one that TA uses to provide, well, for the visits. If they have to visit school districts, it's based on the indicators that we are getting. Of course, we want to be in all areas at zeros, you know? But when you get a three or a four, that's when it might trigger a visit. That's what happened here. So in looking at the next page, I did a comparison for you. So we have the cut points for two thousand fifteen and then the cut points for two thousand sixteen. In most areas, they stay the same, but there was one area where they increased, and that was the LEAP star and, of course, passing rate, which is for the high schools. And those levels really, those cut points really increased by quite a few points. And so, and then what I did for you also, I did the fourth of the last column. We have the two thousand fifteen indicator performance level. That's what we had last year. And then I gave you the two thousand sixteen indicator performance level for this year. As you can see in the elementaries, we had all ones, and now we have two areas where we got zero. So there was improvement there, and I provided the improvement for you in the last column. Everything that is in black is improvement. Everything that is in red is areas that we need to work on, okay? In the middle schools, I do want to point this. In the middle schools, we had all indicators in number threes last year. In mathematics, we went down to a two. And in the other areas, there was still improvement because we did not go to the four. So we stay on the three, and we're working on that to try to bring it down to the lower indicators. And then I also did for you a chart, which is a summary in color. The yellows are the ones that are the indicators that, indicators performance levels decrease. The greens are the, they stay the same, and the blues are the ones that we need to work on. On the next page, we, I'm providing for you the number of district enrollment last year was eleven thousand one. Of that number, seven thousand four hundred and forty-nine were ELL students. That was a sixty-eight percent in our district. We had seventy-one that exited, and that equaled to a one percent, okay? And just very quickly, for them to meet the exiting criteria, they do have to pass the star, the TELPASS, and they must not get any testing accommodations. Yes. And then I'm also providing for you the parental denials and the monitors one and two. We had eighteen parental denials last year. And then we had a hundred and twenty-seven students that we monitor as year one and two sixty-one as year two. On the next page, you have all the campus, by campus enrollment and the ELL population by campus. Most of the campuses are in the upper seventies, low eighties, as far as the percentage goes for ELL, except for the high schools, because by that time, quite a few students have exited the program. So we're at a thirty-eight percent as far as the number of ELLs at those campuses. We had a hundred and seventy-seven recent immigrants last year, and forty-three in the elementaries, thirty-two in the middle schools, and a hundred and two in the high schools. TELPASS is the assessment that the state uses to evaluate the progress of the LEAP population on four domains, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. On the next page, what I'm doing, what I did for you is I gave you the state performance and the district performance. The first column for you is the kindergarten through second grade. And the other one is the third through twelfth grade, which are the tested areas. In there, as you can see, one proficiency level, the state was forty-nine percent. Our district was fifty percent. Two proficiency levels, the state was one percent, and we were at a one percent. And then three proficiency levels, the state was at a zero, and we did not have that either. And by law, we are required to present the progress to parents. And we do that through the LPAK, the LPAK meets. And beginning, middle, and end of the year, at the end of the year, they do send a report to the parents as to how the students did and performed. Also, the campus principals, every six weeks, they do send a report card, and every three weeks, the progress report as well. And we do have available in the district a portal website for parents to check rates if they have the means to do so. And also, academic progress is monitored every grading period. And for those students that are failing, the LPAK meets, and they recommend interventions for those students. And then they work on a plan to address the needs of those kids as well. We do provide professional development. Right there, you have a list of professional development that was provided last year. Like I said, LPAK, all bilingual and special ed teachers have to be trained on the assessments that we provide, TELPASS as well. We had summer school training for those teachers that did summer school. And then we had instructional support for ELL training for the three middle schools. And we have shelter instruction for middle school and high schools, and LPAK training as well. And just recently, we have, we're also working with Region Twenty. And they have like a portal, also a website. And all teachers in the district teaching in content areas, they have to take some courses online. They do get a credit for that, and they have to provide that information to my office as well. Today, we started high-up training for middle schools, and next week will be the elementaries. And we do have to involve the parents in the bilingual ESL program. So last year, we had three different trainings for the parents. We started with in September of two thousand fifteen. We have the LPAK training for the parents that serve as part of the LPAK. Then we had with, in conjunction with the Parental Center here in our district, we have the Bilingual ESL Parent Academy, November seventeen and eighteen. And there you have the topics that we presented to parents. And then April the twentieth of last year, we had another seminar where we invited our teachers to come and present to the parents. And they, we provided the benefits of the bilingual ESL program, and we introduced a new dual-language program that we implemented this year. And the last thing is that we must, the curriculum and instruction staff collaborates with the campus principals in helping them develop their campus improvement plans. The data is provided to them, and based on that data, they work together with the SBDM, and they complete those plans. And then those plans get merged into the district improvement plan. Any questions?
Mr. Martinez, when you start talking data, that's a foreign language to me. I'm not really familiar with all that, but this is a crash course. I'm understanding it. I know that you had a huge task. I know TA's report said, you know, there's problems dating back fifteen years. But you've taken it on, and it seems like you're really running with it, and it seems like you know what you're talking about. But again, it's a foreign language to me, but it seems like we're making improvement, and that's what's important.
Yes, we are, and we will continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Anything else on reports? It is now seven thirty-four. We'll be heading to closed session under the authority of the Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one point oh-seven-one. It is now eight thirty-three. We're back in open session. We have a motion on item A.
I move to approve item A as discussed in closed session.
We have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Do we have a motion on item B? We have a motion by Mr. Klein. Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Do we have a motion, item C? We have a motion by Mr. Klein. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Do we have a motion, item D?
I move to approve item D as presented in executive session.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis on item D. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item E. Do we have a motion, item E?
I move to approve this item as presented in executive session.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis on item E. Do we have a second? We have a second, my Mr. Gonzalez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Do we have a motion, item F?
I move to approve this item as presented in executive.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second? We have a second, my Mr. Gonzalez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item G. Do we have a motion, item G?
I move to approve this item as presented in executive session.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item H. Do we have a motion, item H?
After listening to the presentation by our legal counsel, Mr. Mahieth Sanchez, in executive session, I move that we proceed as previously agreed upon.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, we have a second by Dr. Cantu. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, say aye, Mr. Klein and Mr. Gonzalez. I oppose this motion. Motion carries by majority vote. Item I, discussion, consideration, take possible action on pending litigation and pending FLSA claims and possible settlements related to Mr. Barba versus Rio Grande CDCISD, Mr. Complan versus Rio Grande CDCISD, Mr. Pedraza versus Rio Grande CDCISD, Mr. Jose Luis Perez Jr., Mr. Santiago Carrion, and Mr. Ricardo Contreras, and Mr. Patricio Sainz. Do we have a motion on item I?
I move to approve the settlements in the following pending cases and claims as discussed in executive session and authorize the superintendent to execute the appropriate settlement documents as prepared and approved by legal counsel.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Cantu. We have a second, my Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
It is.
We got to go one through seven. He's got to make the motion one through seven to the different claimants.
Individually.
Individually, yeah.
Okay.
I so move to approve civil action number seven sixteen zero zero one eight nine, Jeremy Barba versus RGC CISD.
We have a motion by Mr. Dr. Cantu. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
I so move to approve civil action number seven sixteen three five one, Seferino Compan versus RGC CISD.
We have a motion by Dr. Cantu. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
I so move to approve civil action number seven sixteen three five two, Esteban Pedraza versus RGC CISD.
We have a motion by Dr. Cantu. Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Klein. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Okay, I so move to approve the claimant, Jose Luis Perez Jr.
We have a motion by Mr. Dr. Cantu.
I second that.
We have a second, my Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
I so move to approve claimant Santiago Carrion.
I would second.
We have a motion by Dr. Cantu. We have a second, my Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
I so move to approve claimant Ricardo Contreras.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Cantu. We have a second, my Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
And I so move to approve claimant Patricio Sainz.
And we have a motion by Dr. Cantu. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. It is eight.